Okay, it is seven o'clock now, so I will call our meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I am calling our regular city council meeting of October 25th, 2022 to order. The first item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If everyone who's able to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum is an opportunity for anyone from the public to come and speak to the city council, share anything they'd like to share with us. It's not a discussion back and forth with the council, but an opportunity for folks to come and share their comments, questions, concerns, celebrations, whatever they'd like to share with us for up to three minutes. So there's a couple ways to participate in the open forum. You can participate here in person and show up to our city council meeting. You can also call into the open forum and the information is on the screen. It's also on the council agenda and on the website. So you can call in at 1-415-655-0001. The webinar access code is 2452-682-3669 and the password is 1234. Also, we do have community members sometimes submit their comments to our staff before the day of the meeting, before our Tuesday night meeting, and then those can be read as well from our staff. So is anybody here in person to share anything at the open forum? Okay, it looks like we have no one here in person for the open forum. It looks like we have nobody on the line. Oh, do we have someone on the line, actually? If I'm understanding it.
Mayor, it may or may not be Jennifer Anderson. So I'm gonna check and see real quick.
Might be a staff person? Okay.
Yep, so that's our support service is Jennifer Anderson.
Okay, got it. So I will just wait a little bit more and see if anyone else calls in, and then we didn't have any email submissions, I'm assuming either, right? Okay. Okay, well, it looks like we have no one else calling, so I will close our open forum and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the Joint City Council and Transportation Commission work session of October 11th and the regular city council meeting of October 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item that we have is we have three presentations. The first one will be the 17th Annual Great Pumpkin Giveaway Coloring Contest Winners. The second one will be the Arts Commission yearly presentation given by Larry Nelson and Corinne Wolverton. And then the Planning Commission annual presentation given by the Planning Commission Chair, James Rudolph. So I will ask the sponsors and the organizers of the Great Pumpkin Giveaway to please join me in the podium, and then I think maybe you can just share a little bit about the event, your organizations, your businesses, and let people know about this awesome event we've had for 16 years, 17 years, and then we can call up, I can call up the winners of the coloring contest.
We appreciate the time to come and present some very special contest winners here. So there, next to me is Lisa Hintemeister with Luminate Home Loans, and we have co-sponsored the pumpkin giveaway over the past, I don't know, we don't know if it's 16 or 17 years, but who's counting? Anyway, it's become quite a fun event in Richfield, and we're super, super excited to do it every year and see everybody come out. And one of the things that we've, we've done in the past few years is Mayor Maria has been willing to be the official coloring contest judge for our, for our contestants, and so we know she's very busy, but she took time to go through probably close to 100 different entries in all age categories. So tonight we're giving away awards for the three age categories that we segmented out. So oh, excellent. And, and we'll need you to autograph these to make them official, but our, our first winner is for the category of four years old and younger, and we have Skylar Gimo. Could Skylar please come up?
Right.
Oh, coloring pages. First of all, I forgot to bring them to my office. I forgot to bring all of them. I have a big packet. But yours was so cool because it had a ton of different colors. So you didn't just stick to one color, and you did a really good job of coloring. But yours was a big rainbow. It was really unique and different. Thank you, and congratulations.
And the next winner is in the five to seven-year-old category, Nolan McCarthy.
Okay, here we go. So the one, the thing that I liked about yours is you did a really good job of filling in all the colors. So, so like Skylar, Skylar did a bunch of different colors, like rainbow all over, but you did the pumpkin one color, and you did a really good job of filling it in. And you did a bunch of stars around the pumpkin, so you didn't just fill in the picture, you actually like cut it and made a big beautiful star. Stars, so that's. Good. Well, congratulations and thank you for taking that.
And then in our eight to 10-year-old category, we have Annie Johnson. Annie, can you come up?
Now, Annie, the one, the reason why I picked her is because it's beautiful.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I don't know, would you like to add anything else?
Thank you. One thing I really appreciate about this event is when the mayor has come and she kicks off the giveaway, and she says and starts with, "I encourage you today to reach out to someone and to introduce yourself to someone else in the community they don't currently know." So I am so thankful and grateful to Steve to have started this event, and it's become a wonderful annual community building event that attracts, we think this year maybe 500 people. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, the event was amazing. It's one of my favorite fall events in Richfield, and it is such a great opportunity. You see so many families with kids because it's such a family-friendly event. And you do see people seeing their neighbors there. You do see people connecting with new folks they haven't met. So that is probably my favorite part of the whole, of the whole thing. In addition to all the cute tiny little kids dressed up in their costumes, there was a little girl this year that was dressed up as a pumpkin amongst all the pumpkins, and she was really cute. But thank you so much for your leadership, and this is just a really great example of our business leaders and our community leaders just taking it upon themselves to build community and do something really impactful in the community. So it's good inspiration that hopefully others in Richfield can take to do the same. So thank you so much. Thanks.
Okay, the next item is the Arts Commission presentation. So I will ask Larry and Karen to please come up and do the presentation for the Arts Commission.
But what we've done for the last year in the support that you get, that council has given the Arts Commission over the past years. It's been an eventful year again for the Arts Commission, starting with the spring. We had, we worked with the art teacher at the high school, and we did a art show with some of the art students, and actually had a pretty good attendance from family, friends, relatives of the students who were there. I think we had probably 50 or more people show for that, and we displayed their art in the community center for them as well. So that was pretty successful, well-received. We look forward to doing that again next year. We've also did two successful events in the, at the farmer's market. So we did one in June where Eric, who actually put the presentation for us, led that. So we had a craft for the kids and families, and we had a musician there. I think whenever we show up to the farmer's market, it's pretty well-received by people who are again looking to hopefully next year move that from two events to, to three at the farmer's market. Yeah, the other one was, we did some sort of crop art with them at the farmer's market in July. So both of those were very successful.
And we also did invite a local guitarist, Julian Manzara, to play for us as well, which added wonderfully to the event.
Oh, the seed art, yeah. So we, yep, we did the, so the second event was seed art. We did that in July. In addition to some of our own events, we've also partnered with groups in the community. We partnered with the group that did the mural at Galaxy Foods. So we helped to promote the event, collaborated with the Richfield Leadership Network. We were also at the Black Party and when they did the, earlier in the year when they did the event to get input for the mural, we helped staff that event.
The event and the reveal at Galaxy Foods on September 23rd. We had a presence there as well.
And I would say, one of the nice things about the mural is also, if we look at the partners, there's a plaque with the partners in the Arts Commission is listed as one of the partners on there too. Some of the other things that we did this last year, in the past, we did the Paint of the Roundabout, the Pride Roundabout by the McDonald's on Lindale, and we noticed that there was some paint chipping on that. So, and was it in August, we did some maintenance on that. So that's something that we're gonna have to keep an eye on, and we'll be doing periodic updates and maintenance on that as well. We helped Joyce's event, the Crossroads Panorama in Veterans Park in August, and we've been doing that for several years. We were at Penfest in September. We had a table and had, actually had a fantastic activity where we were using some of the leftover seed art to make tambourine. It actually went really over really well, and that was a bunch of older, I would say, sort of early middle school age-ish kids who were really excited about participating in making tambourines there. So that was great. We have been maintaining a little free library in Veterans Park over by the ice arena. We've been working, hoping, it sounds like it's actually gonna happen with Chase Bank to get a sculpture at the Plackett Park up in Lindale. It sounds like that's actually going to be reality soon. And fireside poets, we worked with them to display some of their artwork in the community center. We've had some ongoing art displays in the community center as well. And we will be doing that going forward. And I just wanted to thank Karen for being, acting as co-chair this last year, and for Eric for the work he's done as secretary and for putting together the presentation. And our other members, I'm gonna read off here.
I think, I think it would be important also, and I would be remiss to omit the importance of Mary Kay Champa. She recently retired from the city, but she has been so instrumental and so supportive of the Arts Commission, and I think we are realizing how much she has done for us. And we are looking forward to partnering soon with a new, with a new person, but we would like a special thank you to go out to Mary Kay Champa because she has been absolutely, absolutely essential in the Arts Commission.
Yeah, I would agree. We would not have been, she was very good at keeping us on task, and we would not have been able to accomplish as much as we have over the years without her assistance in that.
Thank you for that great presentation. Comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to thank all the members of the Arts Commission. It's just phenomenal watching you all in action and seeing all that you contribute to our community, so. And there's several of them came to support you in the audience as well. So thank you to the entire commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen?
Just want to say, I know our commissions have varying levels of what a person might objectively call fun or interactive. But certainly, I look to the Arts Commission as one of the best examples on our commissions of really engaging the community, finding ways to, I mean, none of our, none of our commissions have a bunch of extra resources to do events and things, but that you guys, both specifically you, your predecessors, I've always been impressed with the Arts Commission making, making things work and finding ways to bring art to the community that pull the community together in the process. So thank you, and I look forward every year to hearing what's happening.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you as well. I really appreciate that we see sort of a mix of both public art beautifies the community, but you really make it an activity and a community building. It's like a noun and a verb sort of. So I really appreciate seeing those events that are like bringing this to everyday people. And I did want to ask if you've got any hints on what to expect of the Chase sculpture, because I'll admit I've been curious about that spot.
So I don't know that we know exactly what is going in, but we, I think we do have a date of November 9th, if my memory serves me correct.
Yes.
So look forward to that. There will be an installation. We are still kind of in the, I think, in the planning stages of how RAC can be involved in that if we're going to do anything as far as have a presence there for any type of reveal, but Amy Markle will keep us apprised.
Yeah, yes, we, we, they, we did see some preliminary ideas for some of the sculptures, but I don't know if we've seen the final, what they chose for the final work. It's, it's been an ongoing process.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Truman?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, folks, and I just want to say a heartfelt thank you, not just for what you're doing, but the breadth of what you're doing, and it feels like every year you build on what you've done last year and the year before. And it's just, it's impressive what you're doing, and you make our city better. Thanks.
I'll just finish by saying thank you to you and to the both of you, but also to the whole commission. If you could please pass that gratitude along from the whole council. And I would love to challenge you to work with the other commissions to say, hey, how can you be more like us, engaging with different commissions and, you know, different community groups and really that extension of community engagement. That's how I've always envisioned and hope our commissions to be in many ways is they're that connective tissue between our local government and the community it serves, and it should be fun, exciting, interesting. And, and that's where a lot of the best ideas come from. Most of, you know, great ideas from our commissions that have become really tangible things that improve our community. So as you're working with others, like, please spread that energy to everyone, but it's such a great stellar example of, of the work that I'm so happy that our commissions do.
Thank you. We will bring that for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The last presentation is the Planning Commission annual presentation, and I will invite Jim to please come up and join us.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. Wow, what a presentation that was. I don't have anything nearly as elaborate, but boy, that was a great presentation, and all of us should actually probably do a, a nice PowerPoint presentation like that in the future. Anyways, we've had a fairly busy year this year, maybe not as busy as other years, but we've had a lot of good things. We've had some challenges that I want to talk about, and it's been a, it's gone by quick. As you're aware, many of the things that we work on ultimately come to you for approval or recommendations to whether we move forward or not. Couple of those things that stick out are Richfield flats, as well as a Henry III development that are moving forward, and completely look forward to seeing them in their finished states. We've also worked on some ordinances, whether it was from firearms. We redid our fence regulations as well as not only started the electric vehicle regulations, but also revisit them a second time, make some refinements to send back to you to move forward, to make sure that we were in line with state building code regulations. We've done some variances, a few different conveyances to purchase properties that we recommend. recommended from the HRA, some interim use permits, as well as some PVs, which would be planning and developments. We've had some churn this year. We've lost three members of, three longstanding members, two longstanding members of the Planning Commission, and one new member. But we've, we've had a fairly decent learning curve as a commission, you know, and I also encourage to make sure that we allow that, them to get training like a lot of us have, you know, and I think that's very important, especially with a very, very young Planning Commission. I think most of the members are maybe under two years on the Planning Commission. So it's been interesting, as well as being, you know, stepping up and being chair, you know, and teaching them, you know, what we've learned from all of you. That is about all that I have here.
Thank you, Chair Rudolph. Any comments, questions from council members? Councilmember Whelan?
I'll just say a different level of appreciation. I was thinking of you guys in particular. I don't know that anyone would objectively describe the Planning Commission as fun, probably not as likely to attract some middle schoolers to come join in the fun. But the work you do is so important. We literally just, I forget what the topic was, but in the last month, there was something that came to council with your recommendation. I went back and watched. It was maybe even like 45 minutes or so of discussion from the Planning Commission, a bunch of different questions. And then I was like, wow, I, that pretty much, that covered my questions, answered them, and then our conversation went very quickly. And I, I don't know that the Planning Commission gets as much visibility as, as council meetings, but the work that you guys do is really essential. And so I just appreciate that. It is often in more details than, of planning and zoning than I certainly expected to ever become an expert in. So I, yeah, just really appreciate the work, and it's important, even when it can feel sort of tedious. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. You know, as you know, you know, we try to make sure that we vet things through, and you know, we do try to have, you know, whether or not we agree with things or not, we try to have a fairly well debate and look at all different areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to add my thanks. I really appreciate the thoughtful deliberations that you all go through, because I too have gone back and watched things before council meetings to make sure I had the background, and you all thoroughly discuss it. And nobody, it doesn't matter if everybody agrees or not, there's like a very respectful and deliberative atmosphere, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
First off, I have to completely disagree with Councilmember Whelan, because I definitely would have gone to a Planning Commission meeting in middle school and enjoyed myself. But more seriously, I do, I do really agree with the comments about your discussion being really useful. And just to give a specific example of that, questions you personally raised in the discussion that your commission had around the fence ordinance allowed us, was informative to me, and it allowed us to actually address some areas of concern and sort of fine tune that when we passed it. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. That was just one example where I, you know, we saw a concrete change at the council level, but I always find your discussion very thoughtful. I try to tune into every meeting, and I really appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would add in recognition is just that this is one of, a couple of commissions that really require, you know, a lot of sacrifice, both in time and in, in leadership, that you have to make difficult decisions. And then you have, you make difficult decisions, and then you don't actually get to make the decision because it, you push it onto the council. So that also can be really challenging. And so I just want to recognize that, and over the years that I've known you and appreciate your leadership, that you're just a person of integrity, and you're not in this for the money. Right? This is, that's a Richfield commission. And so I just want to recognize that and say thank you and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also thank you for your leadership, Jim. This is probably the hardest, by far the hardest, chair position of any of our commissions. And, and just seeing your leadership over the years and your contribution to the commission. And I think about the engagement in the Planning Commission, and it, there's a lot of community engagement in different ways, but the work that you have done and your commissioners to help answer those questions that our residents have, help our residents who sometimes that might be their first interface with the city ever. And it's about something in their backyard that they don't want, and helping them understand and navigate the process of what is the scope of the Planning Commission, what is, you know, what is going to be discussed, what's going to be decided and not, how does that work? And so I've seen your work and your leadership in that space, but that interface with community is so important around the educational piece and connecting oftentimes for the first time with their local government in that intimate way. But then also working with residents and staff to advocate for improvements that really have huge impact in our, and improvements for our, for our city. So thank you for that, and, and thank you for taking this leadership role on that is so difficult and for doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks. All right, that concludes our presentations. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The agenda is approved. The next item is a consent calendar that is read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of the reclassification of the Friendship City Commission as a committee within the Community Services Commission starting January 1st, 2023, by rescinding the resolution number 8248. And I do want to take the opportunity with this item to say, this is not going to stop the good work of these, these folks that have been doing it since 1984. They're going to continue to manage the Sister City program with Aradia Costa Rica. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank the members, and I believe the chair, I can't see him, but I think Chair Marty Curse is here. So thank you. And we believe that this committee structure will give them more flexibility. Item B, consider the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending section 601 of the Richfield City Code to include new language clarifying the definition of non-RDU's and how properties approved for exemption from the contracted program dispose of solid waste. Item C, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of one temporary instruction easement and one permanent right-of-way easement at 7601 18th Avenue for the 77th Street Underpass Project. Item D, consider the ratification of a contract with Meyer Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $175,788.34 for the TAF Park Lift Station Improvement, Park TAF Lift Station Improvements Project, and authorize the city manager to approve contract amendments not to exceed backstop. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions in the consent? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to also thank the members of the Friendship City Commission for all the work that they've done over the last several decades to provide that connection with Aradia Costa Rica. And also, then I, I'm hoping that that connection will continue, and this is simply a way to streamline the whole process. So thank you so much for all of your work.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The consent calendar is approved. The next item is a public hearing and goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to conduct, conduct and close a public hearing and by motion, adopt a resolution for special assessments for the removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. And so the health of the trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade tree diseases, and it's the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city deems it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owners have three options. One is to remove the tree themselves, two, to hire and pay for their own contractor to remove the tree, or three, hire their own contractor and request that the cost of the tree's removal be assessed against their property taxes. In the period from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, 27 property owners chose the third option, and four property owners have since paid off their balance. The total amount assessed is currently, to be assessed, is $84,622.54 across 23 properties. So this is a, a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the resolution for special assessments for the removal of diseased trees from private property from work performed between January 1 and December 31st, 2021. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Yep, please. Come on up, and if you just want to introduce yourself real quickly, tell us your name and then your address.
For sure. Thank, thank you very much. My name is Sean Murphy, and I live at 7140 Garfield Avenue. Obviously, I'm here with regards to the tree assessment.
Welcome.
I guess, you know, I'm a little confused about which tree on my property. It sounds like the work maybe has already been done. I wasn't sure if this was for future work or future removal of trees. Certainly, I have not had a tree removed from my property in the timeframe mentioned, except for one that I had removed on my own. If it's with regards to a future removal of a tree, I'd like to submit a request to appeal the decision to have that tree removed on my property, as outlined in the assessment, and I have that written request. So I was hoping to submit that at this time, if possible.
Oh, thank you. And those sound like really good, particular questions. Does staff have any comments or response?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Troutman, sure you can hear me. This, I'm Kristin Asher, the Public Works Director, and since we were aware you were coming, we were able to track. So my understanding is the tree was removed in 2021, and it was the old ash tree?
So I paid to have an ash tree removed from my backyard in 2021, and I can produce the receipts if necessary.
Maybe that's just what we need to do, because all I have, I have an amount of almost $4,000, just short of $4,000 was to be, it's identified to be assessed to your property.
Sure.
And if you have that, because we also have, you know, your, your, your requests that we also assess it, so maybe there's just some paperwork that's cross paths.
Sure. Okay, yeah, I'll definitely track down those receipts.
I'll get your information. Well, I have your information, but I'll get you mine.
Perfect. And I can, I can submit that here as well, again.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm really glad that, I'm very glad that you came and shared this as maybe not the most intuitive process, and it's, this is, this is, this is the community's house, and so I'm glad you came, and I hope this isn't the only time you come to City Council.
For sure. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, if you could maybe share that with staff, and then I have a question for staff when they have a second. So is this something that we could look at and make a timely decision now, or do we need to revisit the, if we're, if we're passing the list of all the houses right now, what will be the process for making sure that we, we get to the bottom of it and we don't, we eliminate confusion as opposed to exacerbate it?
Mayor and Councilmember Troutman, I can answer that. I think the council can go ahead and act on the resolution, and then staff will work with the property owner, and assuming that all gets resolved, or there's information provided, that property can just be removed, so it doesn't get searched.
That, that sounds good. We, we're on, on the record, you had that commitment from our staff. Does that seem fair to you, sir? Thank you so much. Well, it's still a public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to, to comment? Please.
Ruwena Nesiroson, 2421 West 65th Street. There's some property on Penn Avenue, 65th, zero, zero, through, anyway, trees were removed there, and I don't believe they were diseased trees. What happens to the wood from the trees that are taken? What happens to the wood from the diseased? Is there any processing or use, use for the wood that, once it's taken down after it's diseased? You don't have to answer me right away.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, thank you. And is, is that a question that either staff has a response to, or, I know this is not during our opening comments, but if needed, time to respond another time?
Sure, I can respond to it. I don't have specifics. If you want a specific location on the diseased trees, I know it's in St. Paul, but I, the name of the facility is escaping me. If it's diseased, it goes to a specific place. If it's a hazardous tree that's not diseased, if it's been storm damaged and is rotting, then we would definitely just wood chip it, and I think we make that available for our residents to use.
I think, and just that the microphone didn't catch that, there, the, the trees that are not diseased are, we have wood chips that are available in different parts of the city over the, over the seasons to, to just, for anybody that wants to.
Right.
To bring a truck or a, or whatever, or a wheelbarrow.
Wheelbarrow.
That's right. No, thank you very much. But we still, this is an open hearing. Are, is there anybody, is there anybody online? I don't see anybody online, but maybe we'll just give it a second?
Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you. Just while we're waiting, wanted to point out, as I've done in the, at the last meeting, each of these have a slightly different timeline. For anyone who's listening, who has one of these, is hoping to pay it off before it goes to the county, or as we were discussing, the, kind of sorting out that particular situation, it gets sent by the end of November, maybe not very last day of November, but if folks want to pay it off, I would do so in the next 30 days or so before it gets sent.
Well, very good. It doesn't appear like there are any more comments, so I would move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
And do we need to move to adopt the list? All right, then I would move that we adopt the resolution for the special assessments, the removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Any additional comments or questions from council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider the approval of the second reading of an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a one-year moratorium on the sale of cannabis products. On September 27th, the City Council delayed the first reading of the ordinance to October 11th, 2022. On October 11th, 2022, the City Council heard the first reading of the interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a one-year moratorium on the sale of cannabis products. In 2022, the Minnesota Legislature passed legislation that authorized the sale of edible cannabinoid products and beverages infused with tetrahydrocannabinol, THC, extracted from hemp. The legislation provided limited regulations of these products in Minnesota under statute 151.72 under the Board of Pharmacy, including restrictions and requirements on packaging, labeling, amount of THC, and the sale of these products to those under the age of 21. Though the state, though the new law has some regulations on the products, there are significant gaps in state oversight and accountability of the manufacturing and production, testing, and distribution of the products. Because city and stakeholders were not given any notice of action or consulted during the drafting of this legislation, staff are not prepared to provide guidance related to an ordinance or licensing of edible cannabinoid products at this time. Staff's recommendation to the. Staff's recommendation to the council was to implement a one-year moratorium and then license the sellers of cannabis products. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow the city time to study the impacts of cannabis products and the, and prepare an ordinance and licensing structure for council consideration. If the council should adopt a licensing ordinance before the one-year period is over, it can repeal the moratorium. Did staff want to add anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Supple, and Mayor Reagan Gonzalez in council. We have continued to try to research this topic. There's still a lot of information out there. Jennifer Anderson, Support Services Manager, and I have sat on additional webinars, continually trying to get as much information as we can. There has been sort of a surge of illegal products that have obviously been in the state of Minnesota, according to other jurisdictions. There have been reports of that. I know that you've received some pictures earlier today that saw some of those illegal products that are in our city. So as a law enforcement entity, we're trying to just get the information as much as we can to educate ourselves, and gives you as much information as we can to make a decision. But it is still evolving, and we're still looking at it from a moratorium perspective and an enforcement perspective.
Thank you. Did you want me to go ahead and make the motion so we can have discussion, or do you want to take questions first?
Actually, for this item, let's start with discussion, given the past conversations we've had back and forth. So I want to, if people are still making their decisions, I want to make sure we have a robust conversation before that. So questions, comments? Councilmember Whalen?
I had discussed with Chief Hen Thorne prior to the meeting, and thought the answer might interest others. Just the, one of the problems is to try and enforce even the parts of the law that are more clear in terms of their, like the concentration that's allowed, some of those things. Do you want to just say again, like if we, not we, you, you're the one doing the job, if you see that a business in Richfield is selling a product that like right on its packaging says it's more highly concentrated than is legal, just the process you would have to go through to actually be able to enforce that?
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. We have a inspection sheet from the Board of Pharmacy that we have to fill out. If we go out as part of a law enforcement entity, there's a four-page sheet that we have to fill out that, that we are not trained to fill out at this time. We would have to train our staff, both Support Services and sworn staff alike, to work with the Board of Pharmacy to fill this out. We would submit it to the Board of Pharmacy on a complaint of an edible cannabinoid product, which would then probably go to the Attorney General. We would then have to work with the Board of Pharmacy to determine what law enforcement action would be taken, whether it be a referral to the county attorney on a misdemeanor or any other violation from a state perspective.
Okay, and my understanding from some of what you had said is that the timelines on that are pretty unknown, that certainly the Board of Pharmacy has expressed that they're not staffed to handle this, since, or it was not, the preparations were not made, but that this could potentially be sitting in limbo for quite a while before any action could be taken?
Councilmember Whalen, I would hope there would not be, but from what we're being told, the Board of Pharmacy has very limited staff to investigate these complaints. We know that complaints are coming in from across the state of Minnesota and being referred to law enforcement entities, so we would hope that we would get decisions made quickly, but I, I guess I'm concerned that we wouldn't. And then what will we do with illegal products on shelf?
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a specific follow-up to that question. So the, what is the role of the municipal law enforcement then for the City of Richfield Police in that situation? So we're not the enforcers of that state-level law? It is then the state and the Attorney General and the Board of Pharmacy? Our role is to just report it? Is, or am I understanding that wrong?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, we would report it to the state under the Board of Pharmacy. They would prob, we would work collaboratively with them to enforce it
Got it.
under state statute, which is a misdemeanor, which would then probably be a referral to the county attorney.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So to clarify, if, well, it's clear to me if we, going forward, if we had a licensing structure, I assume people jeopardize a license by breaking such rules, and that's a, that enforcement makes sense to me. I am a little bit unclear, so what would, if this moratorium were to pass as written, what would the enforcement mechanism look like, and how would that be different from what you're describing now for the state process?
If, if we put a moratorium in place, we'd be able to put a licensing and enforcement structure, infrastructure into place that would be a lot tighter than what the state's process would be. Our concern from a law enforcement perspective, not only locally but across the state, is whether or not the state, which I don't believe they do have the infrastructure in place to be able to handle the overwhelming complaints that they're getting involving illegal cannabinoid products. Having something similar to what we have for alcohol and tobacco would give us that ability to license the product, do compliance checks on the product, and then enforce any illegal complaints that we have on those products from a local level. That would give us a lot more teeth to regulate the sales of those cannabinoid products as it relates to the businesses that are licensed to sell them, which will then, I think, would be able to also probably limit the number of products that are sold to those people that are under age 21.
Thank you, and, and yeah, I think there is broad consensus about the need, long-term, to license the products. I was, I was asking, if people violate the moratorium, what is your enforcement action for that? It looks like the city attorney wants to answer that.
Mayor and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, so in Article 7 of the moratorium ordinance that addresses enforcement, and as it's written now, a violation of the moratorium could be considered a misdemeanor. There are, it's written so that there are options for enforcement. We've just included some broad language that would allow for other civil, possible civil remedies, or other court action, whatever would be deemed appropriate. Right now, it's written that it would be considered a misdemeanor and then provide some other options, so there's flexibility.
But we, as the city, get to charge that, or, okay.
Yes.
And just broadly, is there a reason why we can't claim that power just for what's illegal rather than also banning an illegal product to do this? Like, could we have a moratorium of things over five milligrams so that we can, we can take more immediate action on these illegally high-dose products without banning all of them?
Well, I guess that's a policy decision for the council, what they want to include in the scope of the moratorium.
But I'm saying, is it possible to have a moratorium that would only address those higher dosage products?
I think theoretically, yes. I'm not sure that that would be, accomplish the purpose that, that Chief Hen Thorne is trying to accomplish with the moratorium.
Okay, and then just one last question. I know Councilwoman has questions too. Have we submitted any complaints so far? It's been four months?
Apologize, my button didn't work there. No, we have not. We're currently just gathering the information. We're trying to talk to those businesses in the community that are selling them, and we just do not have the ability right now to go out and do those type of checks and refer them to the Board of Pharmacy at this time.
Okay.
The moratorium would help us obviously slow that process down to come up with that structure.
Councilmember Troutman, and then Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. Question regarding the prosecution, you had mentioned that those would be referred to the county attorney's office, and I was just curious, was, is it because they were, it was drug-related or, or typically, my understanding is normally we handle the misdemeanors, and was just curious what, why, why these would fall outside of our purview.
Councilmember Troutman, that's how the state statute's written, so if we don't have anything in place locally, we would have to revert back to the state statute.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple?
I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Whalen's original question. So if you see something and you submit the complaint, what happens in the interim while the complaint's being processed? Are they required to pull things from the shelves, or is it just kind of continue on until somebody gets around to dealing with it? What happens?
Councilmember Supple, we would have to work with the Board of Pharmacy to determine what action at that point they want us to take. Under state statute, it doesn't give us the authority to pull those products off the shelf at this time. If we had a local, obviously, licensing structure in place with compliance checks and penalties, we would be able to do that.
And other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So I don't know that it needs to be answered in the same detail. I really appreciated the detailed response to the questions I submitted, but I did just want to go through them briefly so that they can be part of the public meeting. So the questions I asked and council received detailed responses to, the moratorium, as it's written, would that ban sales of Delta 8, which has been already for sale for a while?
It would ban unless it's, contains less than 1% of the THC that are not included in the moratorium. So other products available for sale that are not edible cannabinoid products would not be included in that moratorium.
Okay. The penalty, this was already addressed by the city attorney, but the penalty would be a misdemeanor, and is there an option to have civil penalties only if the language were changed?
Yeah, we looked at this and worked with, with City Attorney Mary Techen on it. It could be a misdemeanor, however, and we may charge violators with that misdemeanor. The city could choose to use its administrative enforcement powers to enforce a moratorium. However, we talked about that, and that has not been used very frequently in the city anymore. So as a matter of practice, the city could use or choose to provide educational materials on a moratorium, similar to what we did during COVID, when we had all those executive orders from the governor to enforce, we did more of an educational campaign on that for a business's first violation, and then use either the administrative enforcement powers or charge the violator with that misdemeanor, so.
Thank you. And again, so Delta 8, appreciating that there is, there was some gray area into that, but it was broadly available and arguably legal, understood to be legal since 2018, which is, which is a while ago. Why a moratorium now? Why not any time in the last four years?
Well, I think the Farm Bill, when it came out, didn't garner as much attention based upon what we were told by the state. I think the attempts of the legislature to try to clean up the statute in 2022 obviously brought more attention to it regarding the Delta 8 and the Delta 9. Therefore, then the state obviously gave us the authority at a local level to enforce it based upon some of the language that it changed.
Okay. And then, if we did not pass the moratorium, but again, there does seem to be broad support for a licensing structure, how would not having a moratorium in place prevent you from doing an effective licensing structure?
Well, we would have to, we would have to work pretty fast to do any type of licensing structure. Some communities are looking at their tobacco or their alcohol licensing structure in place. Our concern is that's not robust enough, and there's going to be holes in that based upon what we're seeing already with counterfeit products. We would have to move as fast as we can, but my concern is we don't have the staff at this point with renewals that are going on. My other concern is I know that the legislature is probably going to take this topic up again in January, and from the information I've been told, it's going to be a priority, so I think it's going to change. So if we put something in place now, my guess is that we're going to have to make changes along the way at some point, either in the legislative session or at the end of the legislative session, which could change the consistency of how we work with the businesses in the community as far as, you know, the products that they're selling, but also from an enforcement standpoint. We want to make sure that we work with our business community and give them the knowledge that they need to sell these products and make sure that we have an effective and efficient licensing structure.
Okay, thank you. I do have just some general statements of where I'm at with this, but if there are other questions before we get into sort of discussion.
Excuse me. Other questions from council? Councilmember Whalen?
I was just going to share some comments. Do you have more questions?
More questions?
Just a, just a clarifying question. I think we're aware of this, but just for folks that may be watching, the moratorium is with regards to the sale of cannabinoid products, not to their consumption. It would not be criminalizing anybody that, that buys the product that, as they're lawfully allowed to in the state. Is that correct?
Councilmember Troutman, that is correct.
Great, thank you.
All right, and then Councilmember Whalen with comments?
I'll just share, I, I think especially given the difficulty enforcing things in our current scenario without any change, I am starting to lean toward supporting this. The, I, I just think we, we need to be clear about what it doesn't do to the point that we, we haven't yet had the staff capacity or training to, like, go look for what's being sold, fill out these complaints. I, nothing is, the moratorium won't change that. It will make it clear that, like, we can enforce something, but it, it's still, I mean, then we would just have to be looking for, is it happening at all? That it, we've talked about this, and the phrase, like, more time has been thrown around. This does not give us any more time, the cat's out of the bag, similar to the argument about consistency. I think just given what has happened, it's not an ideal situation. There's going to be multiple shifts regardless of what we pass or don't. And so ultimately, I think the, for me, the biggest reason for this is giving us the ability to have any sort of more speedy, local remedy to illegal products being sold in our city. And I think the, the other piece I just want to name, and I hope in how we message this gets conveyed, that I have, I have heard pretty clearly from staff who came forward with the recommendation, from the council, as we've discussed it, that this is not a, this is not a judgment on the, like, long-term, like, whether or not marijuana should be legalized or edibles should be legalized. I think just approaching it from a place of safety and sending a message that is not, like, these products are bad, but that these products are not yet regulated to a level where they are reliably safe. And so here's, I mean, certainly, as you named, educating businesses so that they can be following the laws as they hopefully are wanting to, but then also just educating the public of, and I don't know if these kinds of tips exist, but like, hey, if you are someone who is wanting to use these, like, no, these X, Y, and Z are not perfectly regulated yet, here's things to watch out for so you can stay safe. And so I think on, on that level, it sends a message, it certainly, like I said, I don't think it gives us more time, but it gives us more clarity in what we can enforce or not. And so for those reasons, I'm leaning towards supporting it.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, thank you, Councilmember Whalen.
So yeah, Councilmember Whalen, I appreciated your comment about that local enforcement possibility. I would have liked, it would have been more compelling if we'd tried that process and we knew it wasn't working as opposed to assuming it wasn't the state process that exists. I think my main challenge to that would be, why throw the baby out with the bathwater? So we don't want these high dosage products if we have the ability to have a moratorium that specifically addresses those. Why also ban the legal low-dose products, and why ban Delta 8? So that's my concern. But just, you know, to speak more broadly about this, I, I think it's important for us to realize that some new issues have changed since September. I'm still opposed, but I hope that we're all kind of looking at this issue with fresh eyes. The two big things that are important to me that have changed is Delta 8 being banned by this, which was not clear in our work session at the time, that that is a product that's been available in Richfield in Minnesota for four years, that we would be telling businesses they can no longer sell, that they can no longer provide to their customers. And the other thing that's changed is Edina only had their moratorium in place for six weeks. So if we were to do this, we would be the only city for about 10 miles that has a moratorium in place. We would be completely isolated in this regulatory environment. But in general, I see a few primary issues. One, that, you know, in that situation where we have such easy access with our neighboring cities, there's just no clear public safety benefit. We're taking business away from Richfield businesses, but it's not going to impede but it's not going to impede the access of any customer who wants to get this product. Number two, when there's no public safety benefit, it just seems like bad practice to do that, to block our businesses. And then number three, I'm not really going to get into this, but I, and I think this is a, a concern that you, you address, Councilmember Whalen. I do worry that it conveys a message of opposition to THC legalization. And I think if it, if it should pass, I hope we take the opportunity to clarify that. But, you know, to go into those, those two first issues, the public safety benefit, I think it's really important that we remember this isn't like regulating alcohol or tobacco where people go to brick and mortar stores and we regulate brick and mortar stores. And if we limit that, they can no longer get it in this community. Online sales are so prevalent for these products that anybody with a credit card and a shipping address can get it really with no ID checks or any limitations. Even the kind of worst case scenario that we saw of a business owner going way over the allowed limits, that's still much more secure than is available to any Richfield resident online. Again, we're going to be a regulatory island. Minneapolis and Bloomington allow the sale openly with no licensing structure in place. Edina had a moratorium for only six weeks, and now they have a licensing ordinance and it's for sale. A resident pointed this out to me, people drive to Wisconsin to buy spotted cow beer. Do we really think people aren't going to go to 60th and Portland to buy THC products? And again, just to reiterate, our immediate neighbors are just an odd exception that we just happen to have a couple places that haven't prohibited it around us. I saw that Golden Valley and St. Louis Park considered these moratoriums and they rejected it. Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, Burnsville, Hopkins do not have a moratorium. The, the closest cities I could find were Savage and Brooklyn Center. And again, this has already been for sale for four months. I understand because of a restriction how quickly this could go into effect. It would be month five when this goes into effect. The cat, cat's out of the bag, the, it's already out there. It wasn't urgent before, and I certainly hear staff's concern that they don't need to be rushed into a project, process. And I don't want them to feel rushed, but I just don't think it is urgent because it hasn't been urgent for four years. So again, why I think it's important to not take this business out of Richfield. It's, as the chief mentioned, you know, this has gotten a lot of publicity. People are newly aware that these products are available and they're developing relationships with vendors that sell them. There's consumer interest in this and for a lot of people consider it a healthier alternative to alcohol. People develop those relationships and habits with stores. And not only are we taking business away for the next 12 months, but we're causing people who are newly interested in these products to develop relationships elsewhere. It, it's not too late to vote no, and I genuinely think, I really hope that all of you do vote no on this. Staff provided us a recommendation. I, I appreciate the thought they put into this and the discussion we had in September. There are really valid concerns and issues, and I want us to keep working towards those. I, I support licensing. But right now, we're being asked to vote in a policy, and that policy says we need to completely ban this, starting in month five of it being legal or four years, five months for a period of 12 months after that. And that is necessary to achieve this licensing structure. I don't believe that I, I have trouble believing that others really believe that that is necessary. I'm going to vote no on this. Voting no doesn't mean we don't think staff's concerns are valid or that there isn't a need to do more here. Voting no doesn't, it, it, it's, yeah. It doesn't mean that there aren't real concerns, there aren't real violations that need to be addressed, but it does mean that this is not the right way to address them. So I hope you, I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Other comments from council? Yep, go ahead.
The specific follow-up to your question about, I mean, I, I think you've been fairly clear that you would, your, your best case scenario is no moratorium at all. But your question about why not a moratorium specifically on the things that are illegal just to give us local enforcement? I, I guess my understanding, not being an expert in this, is that part of the problem is, I mean, I, I used the example of something that clearly says on the packaging that it is too concentrated. But my understanding is that there it is, there's not good tests to do at a local level to understand what is legal or not. And that having a moratorium where, I mean, a moratorium that basically repeats state statute but gives us authority to enforce it doesn't actually solve the problem of being able to tell what is legal or not.
Well, I think we're, you know, we're getting head to what we might cover in the licensing ordinance. I'm not aware that any city has included lab testing. I don't know if staff are aware of a city that has included lab, lab testing or any way to address the counterfeit products.
That, Councilmember Whalen and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary in council, that is a concern of ours, especially as we see products out on the street. We, we don't have any testing procedures in place. We, the state doesn't have any testing procedures in place. These individual businesses are supposed to have those products tested, and there's a sheet that they have that we're supposed to take a look at, which to be honest, it's a lot of numbers, and I am not a, a tech. So I, I don't know what those numbers mean. That's probably where the Board of Pharmacy is going to have to come in to take a look at that local product to determine whether or not it fits the requirement of the state statute. But again, it's, it's very convoluted, very confusing, and we do not have any testing in place at this time.
So I think it's a valid concern. I guess my response would just be, I don't think it's going to be any better when we have the, the licensing structure in place for better or worse.
Councilmember Supple.
I have a follow-up question. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary mentioned that Edina took about six weeks to do this. Do we have any estimate? I know we've put the moratoriums as a full year to provide maximum time, but do we have any estimate of how long it would take to develop a licensing structure?
Well, I know we're working on it along with renewal for alcohol and tobacco. And, and I know that we're also bringing, based upon the Advisory Board of Health, the issue of flavored tobacco in front of you in the first quarter of 2023. I, I would probably have to defer to Support Services Manager Jennifer Anderson, who's on the, on the line, I believe. She can probably give a better idea because she would be creating, I would be working collaboratively with her, but she would be creating the structure.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Council. You know, realistically, I think we're looking early 2023 to have a draft ordinance and a draft licensing structure in front of the council. And that's, that's just purely based on the fact that business licensing is in renewals. We are short-staffed. We're looking at, as the chief mentioned, bringing flavored tobacco in front of you as well as in early 2023 as well. So I think that's a realistic timeline at this point.
Okay, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just a very quick comment to clarify from Councilmember Whalen's question. Just to be clear, if, if there were a compromised direction by this that we did just want to do a moratorium that addressed the high volume products, I would support that. Just to be clear, I would be fine with that.
Other comments, Councilmember Whalen?
I guess, City Attorney Techen, with, I understand your, you had not, you didn't have time to research it, but the, you're, you indicated that could be possible. I guess we didn't actually give Chief Hentor a chance to respond. Does that, does that feel more helpful than doing nothing? Or does that feel just as complicated? And if we are not going to do it as proposed, we might as well not do anything? With, with the proposal of a, a moratorium on everything that is more highly concentrated, that is effectively not, not prohibiting anything additional, just giving us local authority to do something about it?
Councilmember, I, I guess I'm not exactly clear on what's being proposed, to be honest.
So I forget the exact level of what is allowed in the state statute. But if we put a local moratorium on the sale of anything more concentrated than that, which I mean, is technically already illegal under state.
Right, I mean, that's already illegal. So if, if, if the officers, I mean, if, if a retailer was selling something that's not lawful under statute, it's more highly concentrated, that could already be, that's already a crime. So.
Yes, but I guess the question is, and maybe moratorium wouldn't be the tool. Is there a tool that would give us local authority to enforce it without having to go to the Board of Pharmacy? Or is the only local answer to that the licensing we're ultimately working toward?
My understanding, and maybe Chief, Chief Hentor probably knows more about the enforcement structure, but my understanding is that it has to go through the process that Chief Hentor already described. It's my understanding of the importance.
Yes, you are correct. That's the process that we would have, we'd have to go through. I don't know if Jennifer Anderson wants to add anything to this.
No, I don't, I don't have anything additional to add at this time.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So to be clear, right now, that has to go through the Board of Pharmacy. If we ban all of it, it doesn't have to go through the Board of Pharmacy or it still does? If we, if we passed the staff recommendation here, you can do a local action, right?
Um, yes, the, the city can enforce violations of the moratorium.
Right, but we can't just have a moratorium that says we ban all products that are higher than the concentration allowed in that state statute, and then we could act on that?
Well, right, and I, I apologize. I think maybe I misunderstood your question earlier.
Okay.
But I think, I think the answer is that those items are already illegal under the law. And so I don't think there would be a reason or a basis to adopt a moratorium to prohibit sales of products that are already illegal. Moratorium is putting a pause on something that, we're putting a pause on the products that are now legal under the law so that there's time to put a local regulation in.
Councilmember Troutman, do you have a follow-up?
Just clarifying, because I think I, I think I share my colleague's question on, on the, and it, maybe it's just how things were explained to us. But my understanding, based on the example, which we know anecdotally is the case, is that we have cannabinoid products that are not lawful, that are being sold in Richfield right now. But right now, the only tool we have is to fill out a four-page form and submit it to a state agency that doesn't have the resources that will refer it to another state agency that is under resourced, that will refer it back to us to refer it to the county attorney's office maybe. And that the moratorium gives us the tool to, because, but we have that tool even though it's already unlawful, that if it's 100 milligrams in the, in the gummy or the brownie, even though we see that now, we don't actually have the tool. And the moratorium doesn't just prevent the five-milligram cannabinoid products, but also the 100-milligram products that are being sold right now. And so if I could reframe or just re-ask what I think my colleagues are asking is, well, if we actually need that tool to ban both the lawful and the unlawful products, local, or to enforce the local, the, the law locally, why couldn't we just amend the moratorium to include the five-milligram but exclude everything? We all understand that it's already unlawful, but it seems like even though it's unlawful, we don't actually have the tools to stop that. And so is there a moratorium on those higher, those higher dose, higher-milligram products? Is that, am I, am I to make things more confusing or clearer?
I think you're maybe saying the opposite of what I was saying, which is like you want, we're saying if we could amend the moratorium to include or ban the high dosage products, but not the low dosage products. Yeah.
That's correct.
I mean, I guess I'm clear why you wouldn't have a moratorium for something that's already illegal, but it does feel like we're kind of justifying this moratorium because we don't like the enforcement process that the state has provided, at least in part. So I, I don't know, if it was, I, I defer to the attorney, the city attorney. If it's, if it's not possible to do, then I guess that's off the table. And I would reiterate that I still don't think this is a good policy response to the problem. If it is possible to do that, as a compromise, I support, but it sounds like it's not.
Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, and it's Councilmember Troutman. You also have, besides the high concentration, which is obviously if it's above five milligrams per edible and 50 milligrams per packaging, you also have the issue of the packaging and how that is laid out, which can be a state violation or a local violation, whether or not the container is opaque, whether or not, you know, how the labeling is on there, that there's, I'm just looking at this four-page sheet that we have to fill out for the state of Minnesota, and, and there's a lot of other violations of the product aside from just the concentration of the product. So that might become difficult to try to craft a moratorium specific to just concentration versus the other violations, whether or not there's a UPC code on the product and, and other things that the state has within the state structure. So that could be difficult from our enforcement perspective.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Chief. And I'll just say this, I think if there's a way to, to, to provide more clarity and maybe do a half, you know, something, something that would, would bring consensus, I'd be interested in that. I will just say, I'm most concerned about young people and the access that they have. And I don't think, I don't know that we necessarily share our concerns about our neighbors when it comes to flavored tobacco, that we're comfortable being a leader when we have products that are specifically targeted towards children, which is not to say that we want to make cannabinoid products illegal, but I'm very interested in the public health considerations. And so for that reason, I think I'm, I, not, I'm thinking, I'm, for that reason, I'm supporting the, the moratorium, and that's where, that's where I'm falling on the issue.
Councilmember Whalen.
Can I ask, to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's point about our neighbors, have we, I know we got a report of what is probably the much easier black and white information to find of just which cities had or were considering moratoriums. Have you had conversations specifically with our neighbors or in the, like I know the League of Minnes, or I can't remember. One of the regional groups had brought together several cities for places that are not, have not done anything or have put in a much quicker licensing process. Do you have a sense, is that because they had more staff capacity to research and put something in place quicker or that they have more staff capacity to follow up and pursue the, the state enforcement option that exists now? Or are they simply ignoring it? Or I guess in places where they're not using this tool, do they have other tools or what's happening?
Councilmember Whalen, some of the conversations I've had with my peers, and you talked about a little bit early, earlier, excuse me, was, was just clarity. This is such an ambiguous statute in how to enforce it and how it's laid out and what the expectations are from across the state that I think a lot of people have just put moratoriums in place for clarity. Those that have, have not have just sort of put something quick in place until additional changes happen. And, you know, I've, I've talked with them, and, and obviously now they're dealing with issues of, you know, products that are illegal and things like that and, and having and take, take, have to take that enforcement action. But, you know, I'll let Jennifer talk about it, but those are some of the things that I'm hearing. And I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about clarity. I've said on additional webinars, after sitting on the League of Minnesota City's task force on this, and, and it's, it's changing constantly. And so that's why a lot of cities, you know, have looked at their licensing program and felt that by putting it in place quickly, it might solve some of those problems. Maybe some it has, some it hasn't. I don't know. But I'll let Jennifer talk, and I'm sure she's talked to a lot of her colleagues.
Yeah, you know, the chief, you know, kind of hit the nail on the head there. I think that there were a lot of communities that put a very simple structure in place in an effort to allow it and, and to wait and to see what the legislature will do early in the year. Others were pretty adamant about implementing a moratorium. There is still a lot, I can tell you on a daily basis, that we're learning about this, issues that we're seeing in other cities that I think we have an advantage in learning from as they deal with what they're seeing in their committees, in their communities. That's, that's what I've been hearing from, from the public health side of things. So it's, you know, it's different for every community councils are taking different actions based on, on their own community.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So for, first off, I did want to respond to the flavored tobacco comment because we actually did discuss in the work session how many apples and Bloomington both had in place. You might have caught me Googling. Edina also has a flavored tobacco ban in place. place. And I, I think there's, you know, I think there's an analogy of like your parents saying you wouldn't jump off a bridge just because all your friends did. So, yeah, we shouldn't always necessarily follow what other cities are doing, but when we consider the impact and the possible benefits of this moratorium, we should consider the public safety impact, and does it actually prevent anybody from accessing this product? And it doesn't. In fact, we received pictures from Pump &amp; Munch, or, sorry, I'm going to change the name, a retailer on 63rd and Lyndale, and there is a full, full-service Delta 9 shop just across the highway in Minneapolis, within two blocks of that shop. Like, anybody can walk there in five minutes. There's, there's just no impact to this. But there is an impact to our businesses. We're taking it away from our businesses. And just more generally, I think about the methodical way that our staff and, and our council sets policy, and we have real specifics and real basis to do things, and I just don't feel like that's here. The best we get is we get more questions of, "There might be counterfeit products. We don't know how much." You know, "It might be sold in illegal packaging. We don't know how much. We, we have an enforcement process. We don't know how long this takes because we haven't taken it." And I understand a moratorium can give us time to answer those questions, but we need to feel confident that this is a good answer for the next 12 months, and it is worth the cost to Richfielders in terms of, of their convenience and in terms of businesses' access to sell this legal product. I, I don't think it is, but it troubles me that we, it just feels like we've got kind of a lot of anecdotes and questions, and that we're believing that that's going to lead us to the solution of a one-year moratorium.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
At this point, I guess I still would support a moratorium, but I would hope that we would not, like, have to use the entire year, because I do think eventually the best solution is licensing it. But I do have some public health concerns that I've stated in previous meetings about access for youth. There's also the worry of the counterfeit, counterfeit products and that type of things, because clearly the state guidelines need clarification, and it sounds like the enforcement process is very cumbersome and not a good one at this point. So I guess I would, at this point, be in favor of the moratorium, but would hope that we would move expediently to figure out a licensing, licensing procedure.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. I'll share my position as well. This was very difficult for me, for all of the reasons that were, have been discussed today and in, and in other meetings. And it's very upsetting that in this situation, and, and the same has been true in COVID, with COVID policies at the state level, that at the state level, these things are not taken into account in a comprehensive way, and then the, and the due diligence isn't done at the state level. It gets passed down to the local governments, and then we are, we end up with very little information, very little tools to be able to comprehensively and irresponsibly make these decisions. And so I, I am going to continue to support the moratorium. I see this, because of all the unknowns, I see this as kind of the most prudent way, given what has been down, handed down to us to make these decisions, and giving our staff the time that they need to make those decisions. And I see this as a short-term impact for long-term gain. And I would also echo the, some of the comments that I've heard from Councilmember Whalen about making sure, how are we communicating about this with our community and our retail shops and our owners? And then just agreeing that that is very important. It's confusing for all of us. It's confusing for our retailers as well, and we want to make sure that we're supporting them through this process. And then I wanted to echo the support that Councilmember Supple said. You know, I really do hope that this is not a full-year moratorium, and that we are able to, hopefully, as Jennifer has shared, you know, get something in place by the beginning of next year. But I understand that there's a lot of moving pieces, and I just request that staff, please do, do what they can to, to move the process along, and we can end the moratorium sooner than a year. And then I will just reiterate, because it was a request in the meeting, this does not mean I am against the legalization of THC. This, for me, this vote is really around how vague it is, the, the licensing structure and, and the enforcement structures that we have. So I think that sums up everything I wanted to share. Councilmember Supple.
As you're speaking, I thought of one other question that should be clarified. I think it was mentioned earlier, but can you state one more time, if this would go into effect, when would the moratorium go into effect? It's obviously not going to be tomorrow.
Right, Councilmember Supple. So the ordinance would go into effect 30 days after publication. And publication would happen soon.
Other comments or questions? Looks like we're looking at when it will go into effect. Okay.
December 3rd.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the second reading of an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a one-year moratorium on cannabis products.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen.
It was my understanding, I don't know if this is what City Attorney Techen is discussing, it was my understanding that we originally had, the framing of the ordinance was not actually allowable, that we, we need to change it to that 30-day. Do we, do we need an amendment, or has that already been addressed?
Correct. I, the, you were provided with an amended ordinance that included the 30-day effective date. So I, thank you for reminding me. It would be good to put that in the motion.
So the motion would be amended to say that it's effective in 30 days?
Right.
Do you wish to add the summary judgment thing, or are you going to have a separate vote for that?
I was going to wait and see if it passed first, because there was discussion. I wasn't assuming.
Okay, any other, oh, so the motion was amended, and then the second was, is the second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Then I would move to approve a resolution authorizing summary, summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you so much for that discussion, and for Jennifer being on the line, and for Chief's work in answering all our questions. The next item goes to Councilmember Whalen, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 925 of the Richfield City Code to include new language addressing what refuse is and the accumulation of it related to public nuisances. The elimination of the old garbage code, along with the absence of the refuse definition in the new organized hauling code, has made public nuisance enforcement more challenging without language that addresses what refuse is and the accumulation of it. The new language being proposed encompasses what is typically observed as public nuisance violations, and will make enforcement an easier process under Section 925 nuisance. The first reading was approved at our last council meeting. And does staff have anything further to add on this item? Looks like no.
We're available for questions.
Okay. Then I would just go ahead and make the motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 925 of the Richfield City Code and adopting a resolution approving summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is a city manager's report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. The next item is claims and payroll.
I move approval, claims, claims and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded for claims and payroll. All, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The last item is hats off to hometown hits. I'll pass it to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. My primary hats off, well, actually, I have two. I'll do the, the other one first. Just want to, at our last meeting, Mayor Reagan-Gonzalez mentioned the work that our Attorney General Keith Ellison was working on for, to address illegal gun sales. Was excited to see, again, today, announcement working on the issue of wage theft and labor trafficking, another issue that has hit close to home and happened in Richfield. So I was really excited about that, which is a good lead-in to the fact that that position, the governor, secretary of state, a couple seats on this council, your state legislators, your U.S. representative, all of that is on the ballot this year. Tonight is two weeks from the election. Exactly two weeks from this moment, it would be too late to vote. So please, if you have not already gotten your vote in, please do that. MNvotes.org has sample ballots, if you would like, and links to candidate websites, if you'd like to research and be an educated voter. So please, please look into that. It's a really critical year. And I will turn it over to our city clerk to share, there's a few different options for early voting, for folks who would like to vote early.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. So there is an option to vote here early in person, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. till 4:30. Next week does start here in council chambers, where you would actually be able to place your ballot into a ballot counter. So you're welcome to stop in here next week, starting November 1st. And then we have extended hours on Saturday, November 3rd, or 5th, excuse me, November 5th, from 10:00 a.m. till 3:00, also here at the municipal center in the council chambers. And then on the Monday before the election, we are open until 5:00. So there are plenty of opportunities for folks to come vote here at City Hall. Otherwise, if you do wish to have a mail-in ballot, try to contact Hennepin County or myself and my team to get you one as soon as possible. And we don't want you not being, getting your vote counted. And then there is also another option for those that are unable to even come to City Hall. Please reach out to me at 612-861-9739. Again, that's 612-861-9739. And we can go over your options if you are unable to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We heard several reports this evening from various commissions, and so I just want to do a shout-out to all the commissions and point out that applications are open through October 31st. So you can go onto the city website if you would like to apply for a commission, and we would welcome active participation from all the people in the city on that, including our youth. There are several youth vacancies that are open, and we used to have a lot of youth members, but with COVID, that kind of went by the way by, or went by the wayside. And so we would really like to get the youth back involved as well. My other two hats-off things have to do with upcoming opportunities that are going to be happening this Saturday, the 29th. The Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is participating in National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. And so the Walgreens at the hub on 66th and Nicollet is one of the sites, and you can bring in prescription drugs that you no longer need to give back, and they can be disposed of properly. And that's Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So I would encourage people to participate in that. Also, on Saturday, at our community center, we're having the annual Fall Boutique in Richfield, and it's from, at the community center from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And there's a 55-plus quilters group that has made a fabulously beautiful quilt, and they're going to be raffling that off. There's over 40 booths, and I hope that you can all be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. And, sorry, I heard the community center. My mind was wandering. Did you mention the Ilhan Omar visit?
No, I didn't get into that.
I was going to add that. That Congresswoman Ilhan Omar will be at our community center for a town hall forum this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. I plan to be there. And then Friday, we've got the Friends of Woodlake Dinner, and I think they can still, you can still get tickets on the Richfield Recreation Site. So hope to see folks at both of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to mention the Fowl or Friends of Woodlake Dinner also, and, and for all, and I appreciate mentioning the, the early voting opportunities. I was so discouraged to learn that the position of Ward 1, as the highest percentage-voting ward in Richfield, is in question. Ward 1, folks, I have a special message for you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's Ward 2 has slightly taken the lead with eight additional votes. So we want everybody to vote, of course, of course, everybody, but Ward 1 especially. It's just us here. Get to the polls. And it's an incredible privilege. We, we lead the nation in Minnesota, and Richfield has always had incredibly high turnout, and Ward 1 has always led the way. So congratulations to Ward 2, but Ward 1, we hope that, we know we're going to come through in the end.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And then the last two items I'll share is, just a reminder, please do get your COVID booster shots right now. They are, our kids are eligible for COVID boosters. They are everywhere, community sites, our pharmacies, and you can get your COVID booster at the same time as you get your flu shot. And it's, the reports are that this year, the flu is going to be pretty strong, so please do get your flu shot and your COVID shot. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout-out to Patricia Ibon, J-Pac, or J-Pac, P-Mac. P-Mac, our police department and our advocates and groups that attended today's Online Domestic Violence Resource Fair. So that will be posted on social media. I know it has been in the past, and it's just a great opportunity for our residents and our families and our advocates and folks who are community leaders to be aware of all the different resources that are out there for, specifically in support of our victims of domestic violence. It is in Spanish and in English, so please check our Facebook page for that video, and please make sure, if you can, that you're connecting and advocating that our community members connect to those resources. So thank you, Patricia. Thank you, Marquesha. Thank you to our chief who was there, our other officers, for hosting that events, that annual event online, and look for it online. Thank you. There are no other items, and I will adjourn our meeting.